... options, so I want to talk about that real quick. Will Portfolio was here yesterday, talked to you a little bit about the process in terms of our valuation of short-term options. So those short-term options are there so that we can relocate from City Hall while development is occurring on-site to allow development to occur on-site and we can continue to operate and provide services to the community. So as Will discussed, we have four options that we're evaluating, actually a fifth just came up, so we have this fifth opportunity that we're evaluating quickly. So we have a tour that I think is tentatively scheduled before the end of the week, so we'll figure out how that option plays into the mix. But you'll be receiving some information from Will, if not yet, tonight, first thing in the morning, summarizing what we have in terms of some of the proposals that we've received. As I discussed last night, really don't want to talk about the terms of those proposals or what those numbers are, as we're still negotiating with those particular property owners. At the May 27 meeting, I don't think we're going to be in a place where we can openly talk about the proposals that we have, but when we have our individual conversations, we want to make sure we can go over those options with you so you understand what they are and what operational benefits of those are. You're also going to receive some information on downtown City Hall options. So a couple of things coming your way. One is that we have, we've been scheduling some individual meetings with you all. That gives me, Mr. Zervis, Leanne Course, Will Portfolio, all an opportunity to talk to you a little bit about some of these decisions that we have to make on the 27th and/or June 9th and 10th. So two things that we're going to review as it relates to downtown City Hall options. One involves the space needs options, so we've developed four different scenarios that we're going to review with you. They range from a ceremonial City Hall, which will function predominantly for meetings and just some minor support, all the way to a full-fledged City Hall where all staff is operating. But we'll go through those options and kind of talk to you about the pros and cons. You'll also receive a model that talks about the financial impact of those decisions. So a couple of things associated with that. One is obviously the construction cost, but then there are also some opportunity costs associated with revenue that could come into play. So we've developed some assumptions related to revenue that the city could receive from ground leases, which is how we're financing a lot of the improvements. So those revenues from ground leases, so we're going to give you the comparisons of, you know, what it costs to build based upon certain square footage, potential for ground leases based upon the square footage. So theory being, if you develop a little bit less in terms of City Hall, you might have some greater opportunity to generate revenue with ground leases with private development. So we're making some assumptions on that. We're going to show you some models with our assumptions, but we're trying, and I talked about this a little yesterday, we're trying to grab data from Tara and Frisbee so we can better inform you in terms of what those opportunities are. We'll make some assumptions, but it really is going to be driven by what Tara Frisbee thinks they can or can't do.
Mr. Lucassick?
Yes, Mayor.
You mentioned four options. Obviously, one ceremonial, that's one. The fourth and number four would be kit and caboodle there.
Yes.
Are two and three just different iterations of how much of the public-facing stuff, public-facing functions is downtown?
Yeah. So the second option is a partial City Hall, so it'll have the ceremonial functions that we discussed, as well as some administrative functions. Then there'll be probably some forward-facing, but haven't quite sorted that out yet. And then the third option is a City Hall, kind of a full City Hall, but excluding development services. The fourth option is all City Hall, including development services. Okay?
And then just one follow-up there. I believe you're exploring with Tara Frisbee, and they are working on the possibility of a smaller building with potential for us to lease additional space. Is that one of those, is that incorporated into Models 1, 2, and 3, then?
Oh, yes. I mean, that'll factor, that'll, yes, thank you. That'll factor in the decision-making because that'll be a part of that cost evaluation.
Very good.
So, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. And then last two things we're going to be sharing with you. One is associated with Tara Frisbee's initial proposal, where they made the assumption that City Hall was going to stay in place as they were building Phase 1, Phase 1A of the project, which included City Hall and the community center. Obviously, they submitted a revised interim master plan to you all, so that has some changes to the programming, so that could change some of the phasing. So we need to understand what happens with some of the phasing. But in their initial proposal, they made the assumption that City Hall was going to remain on-site as new City Hall and Community Center were being built. So we started doing some analysis of, well, what are the costs of staying on-site? What's the financial benefit of staying on-site versus the financial benefit of moving? So each one has its pros and cons. If you stay on-site, you avoid some expense, but you also lose that opportunity to generate some revenue. If you move to another site, you have a bunch of moving expenses, but you have the opportunity to gain some revenue from ground leases. So we want to do that analysis just to make sure we understand what the financial implications are of those decisions. Again, things have changed a little bit. Sands are shifting because we just got this new proposal, so I don't really know what some of the phasing looks like as we're going forward. So that analysis could change dramatically or be all for naught because Tara Frisbee might be changing their phasing and it might not be the opportunity that we thought we had. And then lastly, we're going to run the full financial model for you so you can understand the difference between the proposal that we based the decision on Tara Frisbee with compared to the interim master plan and what the financials look like based upon their proposal that you received last night. So you have all this data that's going to be coming at you pretty quickly. We're going to try to package it so it's pretty easy for you to find and not dribble it out all week long. So we'll try to package that up, get it to you all in one time, so it's easily digestible for you. And again, a lot of that is in preparation, not only for these individual meetings that we want to have with you, but also for that meeting on the 27th where we'll review everything that we reviewed with you one-on-one in a public setting so everybody gets to see what's going on. So that's all I have for you.
Council members, any questions? No? All right, thank you. We'll open up this for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak about the partnership opportunity, please come forward now. Please give your name and address, you'll have up to three minutes.
Sure. Steve Zumtobel, 840 Oleander Street, a longtime Boca resident. I just first want to say thank you for the opportunity to be heard. You know, my big question is, what is the vision of this city? You know, what does this city really want to be? When I think of Boca Raton, I think of the word charming. Cities like Santa Barbara, Palm Beach Island, Pebble Beach, they evoke charm. Cities like Aventura, don't. Green space, we need to maintain every inch of, square inch of green space to maintain that charm. Less density, more green space. And I've heard the committee and everybody talking about, we need more housing, low-cost housing. I checked last night, there are over 1,800 apartments available for rent in Boca Raton. We don't need any more. We've heard about traffic concerns. You guys are probably sick of hearing it. I'm sick of thinking about it. We still have huge buildings that are under construction going up. Tower 155, Residences at Mandarin Oriental, Glass House Boca Raton, Modern Boca, Royal Palm Residences, I can keep going on, just to name a few, that aren't even finished construction. The development in progress and planned on Palmetto Park Road alone, just from A-1A to Federal Highway, deeply concerns me. The real problem hasn't even begun yet. Where are these people going to park? How is the traffic going to flow? I would like to see, I think we would all like to see these traffic studies and understand them, because it's certainly, the way the traffic is flowing right now is a disaster. And from a big picture, it really seems to me that we're heading straight towards becoming another Aventura. This planned development that you're talking about will only accelerate that. Selling out to developers may seem like a great short-term idea and a solution, and maximizing, selling our community amenities out to developers to maximize some revenue from a hotel that we don't need. It may seem like a great short-term solution, but in the long term, it's a huge mistake. Your legacy should be maintain our charm, not selling out to developers, and create yet another overcrowded, gridlocked Aventura. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else?
Same household, Ivan Zumtobel, 840 Oleander Street. I've been a resident of Boca Raton since 1978. For the past eight years, I've had the pleasure of serving on the city's Historic Preservation Board. As you well know, Boca Raton has always prided itself on its green spaces, and the acreage surrounding City Hall exemplifies what our city stands for. The tennis center, the ball fields, the basketball courts, the skate park, the schoolhouse museum, the banyan trees, these are all part of the fabric of our city and its residents. This is our land and provides us with our community services. Moving everything doesn't make financial sense, and it doesn't make practical sense. Why are we mixing a government campus with retail condos, townhomes, offices, restaurants, hotels? I understand the need for a new City Hall and Community Center, but this plan is dense, and while you claim there are green spaces, grassy areas next to restaurants, shops, and fake grass rooftops shouldn't be deemed public green space. We can construct larger, more efficient buildings right where they are. Boca Raton has been a certified Tree City USA for 44 years. This development will destroy some of our oldest and most beautiful trees. At the last meeting, it was mentioned that one of the banions might not make it. Is it sick, or is it in the way? Will our affordable community center classes cost more as a result? In the end, I wonder who is going to pay for these advanced, you know, enhanced spaces? It's a government campus meant to serve the residents of Boca Raton. I don't think it should be considered another shopping or dining destination. My husband said earlier, traffic will increase, quality of life will decrease. We already have plenty of new retail storefronts from all of the other new apartment buildings that you've allowed to be built east of Federal Highway, and they're mostly vacant, so I don't know why we need more. There is little, if nothing, left of Boca Raton's original footprint. The original downtown has been leveled to make room for another high-rise, Aletto. This is the last area left untouched. The city has a rich history, and this year, we're celebrating our centennial. The proposed development designs don't reflect any of our historical roots. Where's the Meisner influence? The current renderings look like a Miami Beach hotel and nightclub. And why is the city working with a developer? We can create our own government campus in a sustainable way and keep our community activities affordable and convenient for our East Boca residents. And finally, our downtown signage boasts live, work, play, but you're taking away the places where we play. Thank you very much.
If you'd like to speak, may I suggest invite you to come up to the front row because it'll, that way we can just go right at it.
My name is Michael Welch. I came to Boca in '59, so obviously, I've seen traffic get really bad. The only thing I want to say-
And your address, please, Mr. Welch.
What's that?
Your address, please.
825 Al Amanda.
Thank you.
For 50 years, and the house is 100 years old. Anyway, one of my concerns is, as my neighbors are speaking to you, this gentleman here isn't even looking up. Are you listening to what we're saying? You're ruining the character of our town. The traffic is out of hand. You're making these quick decisions to make it look better or do whatever, but in the long run, it's not working out, and you're going to, you can't go back and change it. I think we should name the town Boot Talks Raton. It's just quick fix, and down the road, you're just going to be, I don't know. That's all I have to say. Is this the city council, or is it the developers' council?
Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call.
My name is Steve Griffith. I reside at 123 North Ocean Boulevard. I've been here since the early 80s. I agree with the people speaking here, but I was also concerned about, is there an alternate location on building City Hall, possibly like this building, because it's huge? You have the Tri-Rail right down the street. The City Hall where it is right now, that location is downtown with all the green space, and it would be very, very nice to keep that green space because the traffic, like the other speakers spoke, is definitely out of control. There's walkways everywhere on Palmetto Park Road. You can't see people when they're crossing. There's no lights that flash when people are trying to cross. People are drag racing down A-1A, Federal Highway, Palmetto. It's definitely gotten out of hand, and we really don't need any more people. And with all the developing in the Golden Triangle and now east of the bridge, all these houses that are getting knocked down and building all these McMansions, the new value of these properties, when they get assessed, are huge. I mean, I don't know, 10, 20, 40% more than what it used to be. So I don't really know the financial part, but, you know, the Golden Triangle has basically been all redeveloped, basically. So it's, with all that incoming money just from the new properties getting built, I don't know how much money this city is looking to gain, and all the people that live here, you know, it's not very safe. Boca's not like the way it used to be. And I know South Florida, it's not the way it used to be either, but we've got to keep it somewhat, you know, under control. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call on this item. Right, well, thank you for coming. Mr. Brown, could you respond to some of those things? And we try, first, I appreciate that you're here. I know a lot of you have read the plans in detail, others have not, but please, we encourage you to take a look, and Mr. Brown can fill in some gaps here.
Basically, I wanted to say, first of all, that one of the things that I do in the meetings is take notes so that I have a record of what we talked about, to be able to respond in the future if necessary. I apologize, I wasn't looking up all the time. So I, think about it this way. What the city's trying to do is create a new place in downtown, a place that people want to be, just to be. I know some of you for a long time, and I think that you probably spent some time at the City Hall area before it was the City Hall we have today, the 1964 City Hall, or even before that perhaps, where it was a place that people went to recreate, to be together. We used to have the carnival there in the back of the City Hall, all those kinds of things. It was a place that we went to because we wanted to be there. We remember it fondly. I certainly do. And is it still a place that you go to the way you went to before? Maybe not. We're trying to create a place that people want to go to just to be there, for everybody in the city. It may not have organized recreation like we have today. It may have a different type of recreation, more casual. We want to, place we want to go. Somebody mentioned the banyan trees. There is one tree that appears to be pretty sick. The rest seem to be in good shape, and the plans include a banyan tree area. That's one thing that we asked all the developers to do, and that Tara Frisbee has done. I encourage you all to look at the new plan that came in today. It's going to be on the city's website, if it's not already there. It will be there tomorrow. And I think we should keep an open mind about the process, which we're in the middle of. We haven't finalized the plans. That will be, City Council making input to Tara and Frisbee through the process. And we're working with the partners in order to be able to sustain the property long-term. I think that's what I have to offer for now.
Thank you. And I'll just add a few other points. Appreciate that some of you will disagree with what I may say, at least for me. The reason I wanted to explore this possibility, which we're still actively exploring, is that the sum of, the sum would be greater, the whole would be greater than the sum of the parts, which is, we have a community center and a city hall that are well past its useful life, everyone agrees, but surrounding them on a moat of poorly, you know, infrequently-used softball fields, which we're already looking to move and expand in size to address that concern, near the heart of our downtown, doesn't create a thriving place, as Mr. Brown said, where we want to be. Think of Meister Park compared to the Boca Mall. We're trying to look at the next iteration of that, that takes advantage of a bright-line station, that we eventually envision will have Tri-Rail, that will provide opportunities for residents, and this is still resident-focused. Why am I interested as a resident? Because it would create a vibrant civic square that we could be proud of with a whole range of options. And no one, I think, here wants an Aventura. The plan that was suggested, the plan that was favored by the majority of the council was the least dense, the least intense. It's there to address some of the costs because they are sizable, but it's more than just cost savings, it's place-making, and we have an opportunity for that. And I encourage you to continue to come and continue to look at the plans, weigh in. Tara and Frisbee, our potential partners, will have more public outreach. And some comments we've received, I see from some people in the audience, have already made this better, and we hope it will, and we'll see where this goes. But as Mr. Brown said, I encourage you to keep an open mind. We'll have more information coming as it's available. Traffic studies are underway, all these other things are underway, and appreciate your participation. This is your city too, and we value everyone's opinion. We can't make 100,000 people happy, but we do our best to try to find the common good. And that's what's driving this, at least for me, and I think for many of us. So with that, thank you. We will now move on to quasi-judicial and related public hearings. And Ms. Simmons, would you please read the title of Resolution 632025?
Resolution 632025. A resolution of the City of Boca Raton making findings of fact and conclusions of law pertaining to the Boca Raton Technology Center Development of Regional Impact, DRI. Considering an amendment to the DRI development order to reduce the total acreage of the DRI from approximately 224.44 acres to approximately 217.84 acres, a 6.6-acre reduction by removing Tri-Rail Station property located at 680 Yamato Road, modifying Exhibit 2 Master Plan Map H1 of the DRI, providing for a peeler, providing an effective date.
Thank you. I'll ask the city attorney to review the quasi-judicial procedure that will govern this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Singer, council members. The City Council's Rules of Procedure in Section 2-27 of the Code, Rule 1.40, states that each applicant requesting approval, relief, or other action from the City Council shall disclose at the commencement or continuance of the public hearing any consideration or payment provided or committed directly or on its behalf for an agreement to support or withhold objection to the requested relief or action. A summary of the quasi-judicial procedures governing this proceeding is attached to the agenda, and a copy can be obtained from the city clerk.
Thank you. At this point, I'll ask council members if they have any ex parte communications they wish to disclose. I'll start with Mr. Thompson.
I had a brief but non-substantive discussion with Bonnie Miskel about this item, and I believe that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Naklis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had previous discussions with Bonnie Miskel, 13th floor, and David Millage on the approval of the Tri-Rail development, but I've had no further ex parte regarding this resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Rucker.
My ex parte is exactly against Naklis. I had conversations, obviously, for the Tri-Rail, but nothing on this particular matter.
Mr. Wiger.
Likewise, likewise, no additional ex parte other than what was already disclosed. Thank you.
Thank you. In just one moment, please. No, was it previously? All right, thank you. Mr. Brown, was this matter already transmitted up to the state? Is this the second hearing? It's not. This is the first one, correct?
I do not believe this requires transmittal.
Right, so then, very well. So then, I will disclose also that some time ago, I had general conversations with Bonnie Miskel on behalf of one of the affected property owners about this matter, just generally explaining what it is. And I've been by the site many times. So that concludes ex parte disclosures. We'll now ask anyone who wishes to speak on this matter to please rise, the clerk can administer the oath.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you may give before this public hearing are both truthful and accurate?
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter Begovic, Senior Planner with Development Services, will make the presentation on Resolution 632025.
Thank you, Mr. Begovic.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good evening, Mayor Singer, and members of the City Council. For the record, Peter Begovic for Development Services. Tonight, I'll be presenting the Boca Technology Center DRI amendment. The applicant is requesting to amend the Boca Technology Center DRI master plan, called Map H1, to reduce the total acreage of the DRI from 224.44 acres to 217.84 acres, a reduction of 6.6 acres, by removing a portion of the Boca Raton Tri-Rail Station property from the DRI. The DRI is generally located south of Yamato Road, east of Military Trail, and northwest of Interstate 95. The 6.6 acres proposed to be removed from the DRI is located at 680 Yamato Road. On September 7, 2000, the city purchased approximately 300 acres located within the Blue Lake DRI, and the name was changed to the Boca Technology Center DRI. The resulting approximately 224-acre DRI consisted of the approximately 124-acre former IBM Campus, now known as the Boca Raton Innovation Campus, or BRIC, and approximately 100 acres of vacant land. Since its approval in 2000, the DRI master plan has been implemented through a series of approvals and amendments that facilitated the development of Boca Village, the shops at Blue Lake, Centra Town Homes, the Silver Management Company Building, and the Boca Raton Tri-Rail Station. The Tri-Rail Station is denoted as an intermodal node facility on the master plan. In April 2003, a conditional intermodal node master plan and site plan for Phase 1 for the Tri-Rail Station was approved. In October and November of that same year, the conditional intermodal node master plan and site plan for Phase 2 were approved, included 50,000 square feet of office space and 20,000 square feet of transit-oriented retail space, but it was never constructed, and those approvals expired. On January 14, 2025, the City Council approved an amendment to an approved site plan for the Tri-Rail property for Commercial Industrial Multifamily Development, or CIMD, to authorize the construction of a new eight-story mixed-use building consisting of 340 units, including 10% affordable workforce housing and, sorry, affordable housing and 5% workforce housing units, and approximately 30,000 square feet of commercial uses and related site improvements on the Tri-Rail Station property. According to Section 12 of Resolution 32025, approval of the CIMD is expressly contingent upon the adoption of a resolution granting final approval to remove the property from the DRI within one year of the adoption of the resolution. This condition was necessary because the DRI lacks the entitlements to support the CIMD on the Tri-Rail property. On screen is the currently approved master plan, Map H1. By removing the 6.6-acre property, the proposed, the proposal removes the intermodal node facility and a right-in, right-out facility, sorry, exit access to Yamato Road, and 20,000 square feet of accessory transit-oriented retail from Map H1. However, the Tri-Rail Station and the Tri-Rail Station driveway have been constructed and will remain in place. Removing the property from the DRI also reduces the amount of open space in the DRI from 13.88 acres to 13.70 acres because the .18 acres of open space was allocated for the property. Staff notes that the open space proposed as part of the CIMD approval, CIMD approval on the Tri-Rail Station property is approximately 3.88 acres, and that far exceeds the .18 acres set aside as open space if the property remained in the DRI. Here's a look of the proposed master plan. As you can see, the 6.6-acre Tri-Rail Station is removed, and the site plan notes and tabular data have been updated. During the analysis of this application, staff found that the approval of the DRI amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies in the city's comprehensive plan. The proposed DRI amendment to Map H1 and revisions to the tabular data meets the standards and procedures in the comprehensive plan, as well as the land development regulations. The intermodal node facility from Map H1 has been accomplished by the construction of the Tri-Rail Station, and which will be further enhanced by the CIMD with transit-oriented development design principles, which is approved on the property. The CIMD approved on the property by the City Council is expressly contingent upon this application. At their April 17, 2025, meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board unanimously voted to recommend approval of this amendment, and likewise, the Development Services Department recommends approval. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, council members. Any questions? All right, anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Mr. Millage, please come forward.
David Millage, for the record, 14 Southeast 4th Street, Boca Raton. I have nothing new to add to Mr. Begovic's presentation. I do have one prepared if the council would like for me to present, but this is our last step before we could have our building permits issued for the tri-rail project, so we're excited to break ground. Thank you.
All right, council members, any questions? Anyone else wishing to speak? I saw no one else be sworn in, so I'm guessing not, but if anyone else wishes to speak, this is your time. Mr. Millage, do you care any summation? You're declining. If that, we'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 63-2025. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No, I think it was pretty self-explanatory. Ms. Simmons, please.
Wiger.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Singer.
Yes.
Knackless.
Yes.
Drucker.
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you. That concludes this item. We have no regular public hearings. We have no regular public hearings for settlements, so I'll open the floor to public requests. Anyone wishing to make any requests, please come forward now.
Yeah, my name is Steve Griffith again. I reside at 123 North Ocean, and I'm in, I'm here in regards to the two things. The first thing is the biannual review. It's for the general employees. It is Section 12-103 Code of Ordinances, providing that a biannual review of retirement and disability benefits under the General Employees Pension Board to make a determination whether such benefits have been seriously eroded. Okay, the seriously eroded, okay, I'm just trying to get my notes. Okay, the CPI since 2023 has gone up 3.4%. 2024 went up 3%, and so far this year, it's at 2.8. Social Security benefits, trying to do it as fast as I can, has gone up substantially as well. With those two things, I hope you, general city manager and council, would address this properly and fairly due to the inflation of our economy of, as of now, no one that has retired since 2013 has, has not received a nickel more from their retirement, where other branches, one branch starts receiving benefits at two years after retirement and another branch at five years after retirement. And we have to wait, basically, the ordinance states when it's ever seriously eroded. It's seriously eroded. I hope you all look into that before June because the city gets together and checks out the budget. They go over their budget, so I just want to make sure the budget includes proper, addresses the proper amount for these retirees that have done 20, up to 45 years of service. Just spend some time and don't kick the can, keep, don't keep kicking the can down the road. You should address it. You're the mayor of the council, and work with the new city manager, and I believe that you all could address it properly. Secondly, it's the supplemental pay. Okay, it was addressed two years ago, and personally, and a lot of the general employees would like to know why they were excluded from that additional benefit where the other two branches received it. Okay, and I don't want to hear it's a union issue. It's, they should have been included, just like the drop plan. The drop plan included all city employees. So it's just not fair that they were not included into that benefit. So, I know I just ran out of time, so thank you very much. If there's any questions, please reach out or ask me questions now.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else, please?
Dennis Popaka, 736 Northeast 71st Street, Boca Harbor subdivision. I am one of those employees, city employees, that I retired in 2013, and I never received any cost of living to increase the monthly payment. What they have offered in the past, and I missed it, I have it here, I retired in March of 2013, the last amount was a lump sum, and that was, you had to be prior to October 1 of 2012, so I wasn't entitled to that last lump sum. And not that I don't, wouldn't appreciate a lump sum, but to keep pace with the cost of living and everything, I would rather see a small increase, well, I would rather see a large increase, but I, increase in the monthly wage of our pension. And I don't think since 2013 to expect some kind of cola is, is too much to ask. I have 100, one minute left. A second thing I'd like to talk about is I, I'm a boater, and I used to go to the lake with my wife frequently, and I noticed that there's a, a lot of boats that, I don't know if they're derelict or just people aren't moving them, but in the lake, you know we've increased the amount of slips. Hurricane season's coming up. I wish there was, I know the state has passed something where you get 45 days for anchoring and things, there's already laws on the books, but my wife and I have been going down there and just, there's no room. There's a lot of vessels that have been there for, I don't even know how long. If something can be done, maybe flag them or something and give them the 45 days or whatever, but, you know, if you go over that, you take away from the other residents that would like to enjoy that lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call for public request. Well, thank you all for coming. Mr. Brown, could you respond to the concerns, please?
Yes, with regard to the general employee's pension, as Mr. Griffith mentioned, the code requires a biannual review. That particular pension does not have a fixed cost of living adjustment after any period. That's the present state of the code. We will follow the code and evaluate whether or not a cost of living adjustment is appropriate in this biannual review. As Mr. Popaka mentioned, there have been lump sum payments in the past, various, various years and various parameters. I don't have all the details with me right now. So we will be following up on that and certainly give due consideration of whether or not a cost of living adjustment is marked at this year. And with regard to the boating, we'll have to look into that particularly. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, Dennis.
Thank you. And just on that note, we only have limited authority over the intercoastal waterway. We have consistently, or I shouldn't say, we have frequently over the years asked the state to consider municipalities' abilities to regulate that section of the ICW, just the intercoastal waterway, for this very issue. You may want to share your concerns with our legislators, as we will continue to do so too, but in the meantime, we'll look into it.
Yes, Mayor, it's been on our legislative agenda every year for as long as I can remember.
Yes, very well. That concludes public requests. We'll turn to introduction of ordinances. We have one for introduction tonight. It is Ordinance 5734. Would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 5734, and ordinance of the City of Boca Raton, amending the fiscal year 2024 through 2025 budget through the second budget amendment, providing for severability, providing for appeal or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who would like to introduce this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce ordinance number 5734.
Thank you, Mr. Wiger. That concludes introduction of ordinances. We have no quasi-judicial public hearings for variances or appeals, so we'll return to city manager reports and recommendations. Mr. Brown.
Just a reminder, council and public, that on the 27th, our council meetings will begin at 8:00 a.m. in this room, and we will have CRA, the workshop, and the regular meeting consecutively that day.
And, Mr. Brown, on that, may I suggest that we put the workshop or whatever meeting we're going to be discussing the meat of the downtown, put that on the first meeting?
Yes, that, we can do that. That's not a problem.
All right, thank you. I'm seeing some heads nodding yes. That was the whole point. Yeah, let's get the-
So we'll begin at 8:00 with the workshop meeting, which includes the campus discussion.
Great.
Then we can follow when we're done with the CRA meeting, which has a very light agenda, as well as the regular meeting, which has a light agenda.
Very well. All right, thank you. All right, good. All right, thank you. We'll turn to city attorney reports. Mr. Kahler.
I have no report, thank you.
Thank you, council member reports. I'll start at my right this evening with Mr. Wiger.
Yes, I have a brief report to talk about. Thank you very much. I'd like to give a special thank you on behalf of the City of Boca Raton to Mr. Michael Thomas, a sanitation engineer, for his dedication to our city and his quick thinking to protect the people and property of Boca Raton. It just so happens that on May 1, oops, sorry, on May 1, there was a noticeable commotion right outside my office, which is adjacent to Sand Pine Park, and I saw the fire truck, you know, the ladder, you know, fully engaged and water spraying everywhere. So since it was next door to my office, I went out there, and what they told me is that there was a garbage fire. Thanks to Mr. Thomas and his quick thinking, he called 911 and dispatch or whatever, and he got to a location, a safe location, which was the parking lot of Sand Pine Park. He dumped his load, which was on fire, so that the, so that the fire department could put it out. If he had not dumped his load, the, basically, and this has happened in the past, the, the garbage truck would turn into an oven, and it would not be able to be put out, and it has happened before. Engineering and municipal services have told me that this has happened multiple times. And so his quick thinking saved us. We just approved six garbage trucks today. The cost of each garbage truck is $326,000. So I was really impressed by the team. It was a severe response, significant response. Obviously, they had to close off everything, the sanitation people came, the fire department had to then connect 1,000 feet of hoses to get back to a hydrant. And what some of the people told me is that, obviously, this is before rainy season, so it could have been just brush. But unfortunately, it could be people improperly disposing of electronics or lithium-ion batteries, and some of those things, if they're compressed, as they can get in garbage trucks, they can combust. So, you know, there's a word of warning there as well. Our website is very detailed on what you're allowed to throw out, sanitation, stuff like that, what you're not allowed to throw out. You could pick up the phone, there's, there's, you could pick up the phone and call the city and ask them. So just, just a shout out there to thank our sanitation engineers. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I was talking with Mr. Brown a little, maybe we can give him some special commendation or something like that to reflect his quick thinking that saved the city a lot of money, and thanks for all their hard work. That's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker.
I have a small matter that came to my attention. So under, the new administration, they're starting up offshore oil drilling for all coastal areas in the country, and of course, Florida is a coastal area. In 2018, we passed an ordinance way before I was on council that we specifically stated by resolution that we would support, we would not, we would oppose offshore oil and gas exploration and drilling, including systemic airgun blasting. So I'm bringing this to your attention because this is like the five-year plan that's been put out, and I have this information to share with Mr. Brown, and I've had a conversation with Mr. Brown, but we, as a city, have spent a lot of money, a great deal of money and effort sustaining our nearshore and offshore reefs. So we would oppose offshore drilling, particularly for oil, because of the adverse environment it would have on, on the impacts locally, as well as, as implications just with fossil fuel usage. So we need to, as a body, come to a consensus of what position we're going to take. Obviously, we have spoken, Mr. Brown is speaking to Sustainability Manager, in terms of the stance that the city should take. In our 2025 state legislative funding priorities that we approved a few months ago, it's one of those like priorities that we, that we do every, you know, every so often, every year. It's not specifically stated that way. It, all it says is coastal area protection and resiliency, and protect and maintain dedicated funding to key programs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it kind of has a little bit of a high level. So when I was speaking to Mr. Brown earlier today, what I would like to see is we have a 45-day period to submit comments. I'll get this information through Mr. Brown to the council, and I would like to see in June a resolution where we would support the fact that we will oppose offshore drilling as a council. So we've done it in the past, we're, we have it in our legislative for '23, '24, and ' '25. It's just a little bit more broader of a bucket, but right now, this is coming up, and it's coming up fast. So we don't have a lot of time to sit on that. So I'm going to go ahead and send this to Mr. Brown to share with you all and all the backup information. Does anyone have any questions?
Council members, questions? Actually, I have one, Ms. Drucker, and it's more a philosophical question, not related to this specific matter, but it's now come up a couple times. Historically, this council has not done one-off, since the council resolutions, rather, we folded matters into legislative priorities each year. There have been times, particularly with one request from a former state legislator, and even earlier this year, where I supported, voted for a resolution that was then tied to what we'd already agreed upon. I have general concerns, and I think this council is, as a body, generally done well in not doing standalone resolutions on many topics the way other cities do. Why on this one, and if this one is well, what metric or framework would you suggest we start to evaluate these things so we don't have resolutions on each, each priority?
So I guess this is, this is more of a question also for legal. A, I'm not sure why we change, the legislative priorities change every year, we know that. So we change it with the pulse of whatever the administration is, or whatever's going on in the pulse of the community, country, et cetera. So in our last, we have a 2025 state legislative priority that we passed. In the 2018 information, it specifically said that we would, we would oppose the specific item, and it's under that legislative. So we could either add it to our current 2025 legislative issues, because technically, the legislature is still open, and from what we're hearing, they might not meet till the end of June, so even though they're sitting dying, we're still in that process, or we can pass a resolution just on that matter. I tend to agree with you to have it in one area with all our priorities, both state and federal, but in my opinion, we have to be very explicit as to what it is. And I like the language that we used in the past, that it was a unanimous vote, I think Mayor Singer, you also voted for it in 2018, it's on here, that oppose offshore oil and gas exploration and drilling, including systemic airgun blasting, because we are spending a lot of money in our sustainability efforts and all the reefs that we put in, and I believe that if you don't put it specifically, our category that we have in there today is so broad that we might get preempted. And it might not be worth anything, but it's worth a try. So maybe we could think about it, we can research it, and then hopefully, we could bring something back in June.
All right, thank you. I just on your suggestion, if I may, Ms. Drucker, let me look into it for my own, you know, myself. I would say the legislature, if it's not one of those holdover bills, it's unlikely to come up now, so maybe this is something that would allow staff to research before the next legislative season, because there's, there's, if it's not one of the, then there were 12 bills, I think, that got held over, and nothing else is being considered, so if-
This is at the federal level.
This is federal.
Oh, federal, okay.
This is a federal-level issue.
Well, you mentioned, you mentioned side to die.
I mentioned the state because there were also, there were also bills there, that those are the ones that they're possibly trying to preempt us, so there's, so I would, I would want them on both sides, but particularly the federal.
All right, well, well, you brought it to our attention. We'll look. Thank you. Any further questions in response to Ms. Drucker's call for questions? Any further report, Ms. Drucker?
That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Just on the, whether or not to adopt a resolution, modify the existing resolutions, there's also the possibility of just sending comment under the requests that we receive. We could just comment on the matter, and staff could prepare a letter that could be, I could sign it, as long as we have consensus at the council, that's the position we want to take. We'll provide information to you on the pros and cons of the matter.
Very well. All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Knackless.
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Just wanted to wish good luck to the nine-and-under Boca Little League All-Stars, who are taking on West Boynton in the county All-Star Tournament right now, and representing their city well so far, so good luck, boys.
Thank you. Good luck to everyone who lives- Good luck to everyone who lives in our city, works in our city, visits our city, and represents our city. And a great way to represent our city is by getting your Boca swag at Boca100.com as we celebrate our centennial. You can also find out about our whole range of centennial events. This will be our last meeting, city council meeting, barring an unexpected special meeting next week, which we're not planning on doing, of our first century. And I want to say what a remarkable century it's been. We can't wait to look forward to the second century and many centuries to come. Thank you for being a part of it, and if there's no further business to come before us, we are adjourned at 6:54. Good evening.